We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Sholdes.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Osmas.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
And O'Brien.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll... Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Got motion and a second. Discussion. Audrey.
Just seeking clarification, we did get an email today that about 11:00 E. That we will be reviewing that and not voting on it.
What was your point?
We... We received an email that that was going to be updated, however, it wasn't updated in the packet. But the e- the email we got said we won't be voting on it. It's for information for us to review.
Okay. Rick?
Correct.
All right. Anything else? Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. I'm gonna call City Clerk Bernie Larson for the consent.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, tonight for your consideration, I have the city council minutes of November 4th, '24. The city board of canvass proceedings minutes. The Wilmer Police Commission minutes of October 29th, '24. The LELS MOU for temporary assignment. Planning Commission minutes in draft from November 6th, '24. The Municipal Utilities Commission meeting minutes of November 12th, '24. Preliminary and final plat approval for McKenzie Estates First Edition. Consideration of deferred special assessments for senior citizens disabled hardship or active military. Accepting the ClearZone grant for the airport improvement. Accounts payable report from 10/31/24 to 11/13/24. And for your information, director's reports. The financial report through 10/31/24. And then Wilmer Municipal Utilities Financial Report for September 24.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. We're at the open forum, but I don't believe you have anybody. No public hearing? Under regular business, 2025 Improvement Projects Professional Services Agreement at preliminary budgets. Justin Layle, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. For your consideration, tonight is a professional services agreement with Bolton and Mink for the 2025 Street Improvement Projects in the amount of $463,118. Excuse me. This is for six proposed projects to happen in 2025. A reconstruction project on 20th Street Southeast. Numerous mill and overlay projects throughout the city. A bike improvement, bike path improvement project on Lakeland Drive. And also our crack seal and seal coat improvements. I did want to point out that the design work on all these projects is 90 to 95% complete. This would just be for carrying out the construction of these projects. From bidding to the construction services and project closeout. If council is agreeable to this, there are also preliminary budgets for each of these projects in your packet as well. And I will stand for any questions you might have.
Questions for Justin. Justin.
The reason that so much of the preliminary design work has already been completed is that because some of these are projects that were designed for previous years and we've had to delay them?
That's exactly correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Carl?
On the Lakeland Drive Path improvements, are we still searching for grants? Money's still?
Yep, we have two grants. We actually had a meeting this morning with Min Minnesota Development to help us work through the grant. And we've made it through the se- the first stage. We're on to the second stage of the grant. We've got a good start on that.
Thank you. Any else? I'm looking for a motion. I'll move to adopt the preliminary budget resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Next is the 2026 Improvement Projects. Justin.
Before we move on to that, do we need council action to approve the agreement with Bolton and Mink? Or was that included in the?
We need a second motion. I missed that on the mayor's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There's a motion. So the preliminary budget or what you just approved, there is a contract with Bolton and Mink for those services that is also for your consideration.
Okay, so we need a motion for project numbers 2501A, 2503B, 2503C, 2503E, 2504B, and 2508 for Bolton and Mink. Okay?
So moved. Second.
A motion, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Then it's the 2026 Improvement Projects. Justin.
Thank you, sir.
Is there two mo-
There will be two on this one as well. Yep. Yep, very similar. So the item in front of you tonight for consideration is a resolution entering into a professional services agreement with Bolton and Mink for the 2026 Street Improvement Projects. The design of those projects in the amount of $631,890. This differs from the 25, which is the construction portion. This is the design work in 2026 for the proposed projects. So we can get a head start on any design work and coordinate with utilities and private utilities and residents and whoever that may be. This is for three different projects. Fourth Street Southwest, reconstruction, a reconstruction on 16th Street Southwest, and a crack seal and seal coat improvements throughout the city. Again, the professional services agreement would be one action item and preliminary budgets would be a second. I will stand for any questions you may have.
All right, we need a motion for the preliminary budget.
So moved.
Second. You got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Audrey.
Thank you, Mayor Reese. This is acknowledging too that we're moving to that we had talked about moving him back a year. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's Fourth Street and?
Fourth Street and 16th Street.
And 16th Street, okay. And we talked about notifying people if we did that, will there be a notification to those two that they won't be next year?
We can certainly look into the different ways to contact the people. Yep.
Okay, I think that was discussed last time when there were questions and concerns.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly. Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Sholdes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Now we need a motion for the the services agreement with Bolton and Mink.
So moved.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
And Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Next is Justin again, wastewater rate study.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council. Tonight you will hear a presentation of a wastewater rate study from Doug Green with Baker Tilly. If you would recall, in July of this year, council authorized a study to be done to look at the financial health of our wastewater treatment facility. And Doug will explain the findings. And after he is done, and also, excuse me, he can answer any questions you may have regarding the presentation. And afterwards, there will be a couple of action items for your consideration.
Right, thank you. See, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Representative House. Pull this up quickly. It is... All right, ready to go. Okay, Justin mentioned, we did a deep dive into the wastewater treatment fund. And very quickly, the agenda, we'll look at the objectives of the rate study. The historical financial performance. We'll look at the outstanding debt service, because that's really what's driving everything. Future assumptions going forward, both on operating and the debt side. Look at the financial projections and the user rates. So I am expecting this to take, may's expectation, probably about 10 minutes, so. But of cour- along the way, have any questions, please, please feel free to speak up. So this might seem a little obvious, but it's worth restating. The objectives of a utility rate study is to ensure that the rates are sufficient to cover projected operating expenses, capital requirements. Whether that, whether we fund or finance those capital requirements with cash or debt and debt service. So those three things, operating expenses, future capital and debt service. What are the legal, there's only one legal requirement, and that's to make sure when we've incurred debt in the past, I'll use the term debt and issue bond, same, same thing. When we issue bond in the past, we pledge to those bondholders. Well, state statute says that the general obligation bonds that will have at least 105% of revenues available for debt service. How we calculate that is, you know, we can calculate that a couple of different ways. But, you know, in the end, we have to have enough money to pay debt service in a little cushion as well. Then we get into the non-legal requirements, you know, what are our minimum cash goals? There are no set requirements. You know, every, every utility is really different. It gets to, you know, how old the asset is, primarily the treatment plant and then the system as well. You know, is it really old? Are we having to put a lot of money to it each year? You know, then we want to keep more. But a good roll of the thumb, something that typically used is a minimum of three months operating expenditures. And then 100% of next year's debt service. A lot of the debt service that we pay principals due in February. So we want to make sure that we have the money available in the current year to make next year's debt service. So that's a good goal. If we don't meet it, it's, you know, nobody's going to come after us. The ratings, these aren't going to, you know, come after us, or the state auditor. It's just good to know that, and we want to make sure that we're going in the right direction. So what are those statutes? In chapter 444, I won't read this, but it's covenants, which is a promise to secure debt payments. And this is in the, in the bond documents as well. This simply says that you will maintain rates sufficient to cover operations and debt service. So it, it makes it pretty easy. It's, it's in law that we have to set those rates sufficient, like I said, to cover operations and debt service. So looking back, this goes back, you know, to 2015. So a lot going on in this slide, and I'll walk through it. On the left is historical net operating income. So the green is that operating revenue. And the red is operating expenses. Keep in mind, operating expenditures does not include capital. Might pay for with cash, nor does it include principal. So you're, you're never going to have operating expenses and revenues close. You're always going to have, you know, when we're looking at this metric, a deficit. What this tells us, this gives us just historical perspective and, and it looks and we're looking here for what are the trends? You know, are operating revenue decreasing over time? Is it saying the same? Is it going, we know why it would go up because we know when we've raised rates. But there's obviously other, other factors that would affect operating revenue. And then the operating expenditures. And that does not include any capital that we put in that, or debt service. So again, looking at the trends there, so. And then down below, that note, the personnel supplies and other servicing charges have increased 6.5% annually from 2015 to 2023. And a lot of that was over the last few years. So, you know, we're hoping that that does slow down. When we get to it, looking at our projections, we're pretty conservative. But also you've made some improvements that I believe will, you know, are supposed to decrease operating expenses by 100,000. I mean, it's not going to solve all your problems, but it's going to help. So, you know, going forward, we need to keep that in mind that, you know, over the past 2015, 23, those operating expenditures has been increased 6.5% annually. On the right, the, the legal metric that we need to look at, historical debt service coverage. In the green is net revenues available for debt service. Our debt services stayed flat over the past, over this time period. And then that dash line is that 1.05%. So we need to, we need to have coverage that exceeds that. And you can see we have, but it's, you know, going in, in a direction such that, you know, we need to increase rates. But, you know, we've obviously been in compliance since 2015. So this is really what's driving the boat, and you might be aware of it, the outstanding debt service. On the left, in 2024, going out over the next 10 years, the principal and interest. And you see here, we have that big jump. We have the big balloon payments. And that is because on the right, the, the four outstanding state loans that, that were associated with the, with the 2008, 2009 wastewater treatment plant project. So there was a, that PFA loan 2008, see as a big, as a balloon payment. And then the, the 2009 loan, that blue shaded area, that stays in place. And then during that time, we were in that, that ARA, if you remember that, the American Rescue, not, not American Rescue plan, that was the latest one. I forget the acronym now, but the ARA loan and then the WIF loan. So what that did at the time was, that was a no interest loan. And then it becomes due on 2029 and 2030. And so that takes the place of that 2008 loan. Really, in the end, you just need to, we need to look at all those the same. Because they were just, all four of them together were a part of the the 2008, 2009 wastewater treatment plant project. So our challenge is, you know, next year we have, you know, we're going debt service, you know, 4.8 billion up to 7.1. And, and then, you know, in, beginning in 2030, we have that precipitous drop off. So that, you know, creates a short-term challenge. And then, you know, going forward, it somewhat creates a challenge in that, you know, we're going to set rates to meet that 7.7, $7.7 million in debt service each year. But then it's going to fall off. But of course, we'll look to see what's could potentially be coming on. So if there's not any questions with this, go forward. So what are the operating budget assumptions going forward for personnel expenditures? Again, we want to be conservative here, just like all our budgeting, 5% annually supplies. You know, last few years, they've been averaging 11%, but, you know, that, it should moderate, so estimate 7.5%. Others, charges and services, which biggest at 5%. And then we are assuming we're going to continue to do the transfers out. 375 this year, and then basically increasing that for inflation as well. Notably, we're not putting in any kind of assumptions, at least for now, for changes in service demand. What would that change in service demand be that, you know, if, if we had big expansions in usage? If something comes along like that, that's really going to change the overall usage of the facility, you know, we can, we can certainly add that. But for now, you know, we're not as, a big change in service. Yes?
A quick question about the transfers out of the general fund. What transfers are currently being made?
I, it is just that, I believe. Yes. It's, it's just that to cover administrative costs.
So staffing costs?
Yes.
Is that what you'd asked?
Yes.
It has nothing to do with staffing.
Okay.
No, it is the Public Works Reserve Fund that it transfers to.
Right, I'm getting them mixed up.
Staffing for the wastewater department stays in the wastewater department.
Thanks, okay.
Those are enterprise funds, so any expense, staffing expenses stay in that fund.
Goes to reserve?
That's under operating expenses.
Okay, so the transfer out goes to a public works reserve?
Yes.
And that fund is used for what?
For maintenance of streets. So if there's water main breaks and we have to do street repairs and things like that, that's what that fund is used for.
Okay.
Yes, thanks for that clarification. My utilities mixed up. Looking at this, going forward, if you remember historically, with the community investment fund, you know, we've been able to fund the street, the utility portions of the street projects with cash. And because of, you know, the challenges over the next next few years with the higher debt service, in, in this plan, we're saying we're going to, just like we did this, this year, we're going to include the sewer portion in the annual street bond. And you can see that next year's there's luckily not going to be a sewer portion to the street project. But then going ahead, and again, I, I'm hoping these are, you know, conservative, pretty conservative numbers. These are quite a bit larger than the price tag that we've had, you know, just historically for the sewer portions of the annual street projects. You see some smaller, we have, moving down the list, we have one, some of the last lift station projects. Next year, I have a biological nutrient removal project for estimated to be a million dollars next year. Going down the list again, the Welcher lift station out in 28. And then the big ones that, that are really unknown. And it, it's all going to come down, and other people can speak to this more, that are more knowledgeable in this area. What are the nitrogen mandates going to be? And so, you know, we, we have to plug a big number in there. I mean, how much is the state going to pick up of that? You know, if, I mean, you talk about statewide, I mean, that's a, you know, a massive number. And I think I've, I hear, again, this is not my expertise, other people here know it better, but, and some of you might, but the you know, are, are those mandates staying in place? You know, I, I- Um, you know, I, I, I think there's a lot of opinions of that, you know, that they won't, they'll get pushed out. But we have to plan as though, you know, we're gonna have to front, w- we're gonna have to incur all those costs and that they are gonna stay in place. Until something changes, you know, then we'll, then we'll adjust from there. But until then, you know, we'll, we'll plan on incurring, you know, all those costs. And then the big uh, project way out in the future is the Lakeland Drive Sewer Main. I know in some of our discussions, you know, we, it's such a big project, would be looking for some um, state dollars as well. But again, just to put that plug in there to know um, that that is a possibility. And then, so that top table is bonds, the lower table is cash again, then turning over again, once we get through uh, twenty twenty-nine, the debt ser- our debt service payments. Uh, looking again to fund this sewer portion of the street projects um, with cash annually. Was there not any questions on uh, this capital improvement plan? Uh, this, this, these graphs combine the outstanding and projected debt service. What we just looked at, again, on the left, uh, going from four point eight uh, this year to seven point one. Um, and then again, still adding, adding uh, that new debt on, you know, it, it doesn't look too much different than what um, the graph showed with just outstanding debt service. Still have, you know, a, a big drop off there in twenty thirty. And then that uh, the nitrogen um, removal and the um, the big street project come online there in twenty thirty-four. So the big picture, this just really uh, reviews what, what I just went through. Outstanding debt service payments increased from four point eight million to eight point six million by twenty twenty-nine, but fall back to four point seven in twenty thirty. The operating expenses are expected to increase uh, between next year, two hundred and twenty thousand. And then they increase, you know, that five, six, seven percent uh, to three hundred and sixty thousand annually over the planning period. So when we get, another way of saying that is, we get to year ten, that annual increase in operating expenditures is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, the lift station improvements likely will uh, be completed by twenty twenty-eight. And then the nitrogen mandates and Lakeland Drive Sewer Main projects loom as significant, you know, unknowns that need to keep an eye on. So in order to maintain debt service coverage of at least a hundred and five percent over the next five years, revenues will need to increase by those following amounts. Uh, twelve and a half percent uh, in twenty twenty-five, ten percent in twenty twenty-six, and then five percent in twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And I, I will remind you that uh, rates have not increased, I believe, since twenty seventeen. Um, so, you know, i- if we were to go back and put in, you know, uh, uh, three and a half, four percent increases each year, um, we would be at the, we'd be about the same place we are um, today, so.
Mr. Green, I, I go back historically to the late eighties. And our difficulty with our wastewater treatment facility that we had at that time. And uh, the multiple projects that we had, we had rotating biological discs and uh, air filters, organic uh, air filters. But we finally moved ahead with, I think it was like, just short of ninety million in nineteen ninety? That'd be right, when we built that, or later than that.
No, I, originally, no, I'm not.
Later than that? But.
What, two thousand eight was the?
Oh, that was two thousand eight?
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry, my memory is.
Right, I understand.
Um, but my question is, the original debt, you had some graphs there, um, the original debt. Where are we, I, give me a simple feeling for.
Right, goo- good question, Mr. Mayor, and i- it's, it's on this, this graph here. So on, on the right-hand side, again, these four um, in the legend, we have the two thousand eight, two thousand nine PFA loan.
Yep.
The two thousand nine Aura loan, th- that, that's a, that's a PFA, all these are PFA loans. They're just four separate ones with four separate names. So if, if you look at, if you look at those, um, and that's primarily all of them. The only other debt that's on top of that, that top teal part is the um, twenty twenty-four street projects. Because, but for the most part, with the exception of a small amount of the uh, twenty twenty-four um, sewer portion of the street projects, whi- which is in here, that, that very top part. For the most part, this is the wastewater treatment facility debt.
Original.
From, from, from two thousand eight, nine, yes. Right, okay.
I, I think I got what I was looking for, I, I just didn't know.
Right. And a- again, it's been around four, four and a half million, and then um, you know, by twenty twenty-thirty, it'll be uh, you know, it's judged down to about three point six million, and then the next year, judged down to a little over two million a year.
Well, when we were first told, we needed a new wastewater treatment facility, they told us, if I remember right, Rick, you helped me, twenty million? Then it was forty million, and then it got to eighty million?
Eighty, eighty-seven, yeah.
It was just short of ninety million, if I remember right, which I don't.
We were supposed to get fourteen million from the February two. And then it never got signed, we lost out on that, so.
Oh, really? So by implementing, given those assumptions that we talked about, and implementing these rate increases, what, what, what does it look like, projection-wise? And again, projections are inherently wrong, but they're gonna put us in the ballpark and we can, you know, review them on an annual basis. So on the left, the green's net revenues available for debt service. Uh, then the projected debt service in red, see the big jump there. The dash line again is the minimum coverage, we have to keep one point oh five. Uh, a- and so this uh, you know, the, these rate increases will keep us just above that line. You know, will we, we'll certainly need to just review it annually to see if they need to be tweaked, um, to give ourselves more cushion. But for now, you know, this, you know, I think this is a good starting point, especially given um, you know, the conservative, uh, the conservative numbers we have in there for the sewer portion of the streets for the operating increases each year. You know, hopeful, hopefully this will, uh, you know, our coverage each year when we look at it. If, you know, these rates are implemented, we were recommending, then, you know, we'll have uh, that coverage level will look even better. On the right, again, going back to uh, what, the level of cash that we'd like to have, the projected minimum cash balance. Uh, the dark red is that three months operating expenditures. Um, and then the next year's debt service is the light red, and you see the green is the ending cash balance. So, you know, we're well under where we would like to be for the, you know, through twenty twenty-eight. And again, that's not, uh, we're not violating any bond covenants or anything. It's just, for planning purposes, it's good to keep in mind. If something were to happen catastrophic at the, you know, within the utility, we would probably be doing some quick bonding, you know, instead of just using our reserve, and that, and that's, that's all that, that means. But again, looking out ahead um, to the future, you know, we, we know there's some, likely some relief there in about five years. So the next two slides, and I believe uh, this is also in your packet, the um, projected user fees. Uh, all of these charges went up, um, are increased by that uh, recommended amount, twelve and a half, ten, five, five, except for the administrative billing charge, which is just a small amount, goes up um, a dime um, e- each year. Uh, that's much smaller than it, and what we're doing there is just trying to recoup our costs from uh, the uh, Wilmer Utilities. And then that, looking at the average bill, um, for average residential junior uh, user. In five-eighths meter, uh, eight hundred cubic feet, about six thousand gallons. Fifty-eight uh, dollars month this year, and then next year, go sixty-five, seventy-two, seventy-five, and seventy-nine. And, you know, should, should stay there for a while. It, we should, another way of saying that, oh, i- it should cap out that for at least the time being, until, you know, we, we get other information or uh, you know, things change one way or the other. So with that, we happy to take any questions? Right?
You had mentioned the nitrogen issue. I saw the numbers on that, that is, I mean, how would we ever be able to take care of that?
Right, that's, I have to.
I mean, those are, I mean, you, you can't even imagine what those things could be, and I hope, like you say, they might be pushed out.
Right.
Okay, and that would be, hopefully this year.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, it, it really needs to be, because they um, and what is that number statewide? It's something just astronomical.
It is, there's some way.
Right. Kind of like the carbon free by what, twenty um?
Thirty?
Twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty.
Right.
Yeah.
Put goals out there, but well, times reality kicks in.
Audrey?
How do we compare to other communities with, when we're looking at charges?
I, I did not put that in there, but I, but I can add that, I, I, I did not add that into this presentation. Um, so, I mean, it, it again, it's, whether you compare it to, you know, neighboring communities within County River County, or, you know, other regional centers, that's gonna look um, a lo- a lot different as well. Uh, but I know, um, I did not include that in this presentation, but that, I can have that information available.
Anybody else? Um. If there's no other questions, um, we need to uh, a motion, we need a motion to amend the sanitary sewer rates.
Make a motion to call for a public hearing to amend the sanitary sewer rates on December second at six thirty-one. Second.
Discussion. I find this uh, average user rate breakdown interesting. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Asp.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Baggarly.
Aye.
And Osmus.
Aye.
Eight I's, zero no's.
That passes.
Motion to publish by summary.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion, roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Asp.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Baggarly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
And Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight I's, zero no's.
That passes. Um. Now, Justin, another professional services amendment.
Are you, are you sick of looking at me up here?
No.
No.
This is my last one for tonight.
We haven't gotten to see anyone.
Instead of sitting back in the corner, right? Uh, the uh, item for your consideration tonight is a two, twenty twenty-two engineering professional services amendment for project number twenty-five oh three D. Um, and I can explain that, so project number twenty-five oh three D is the Business North Seventy-One Mill and Overlay Project. Um, initial design work for that project was done in twenty-two, that's why it was part of that twenty-two professional services agreement. But the project itself did not happen. Since that time, we were awarded a one point five million dollar local road improvement grant from the state of Minnesota. And that required the scope of that project to change. The initial project um, back in twenty-two, twenty-two was designed for um, right outside the window here, from County Road twenty-four south to Civic Center Drive. But now with this um, grant that we've gotten, that scope is, is broadening, and the project will extend south all the way to Robins Island. Um, the entrance to Robins Island, the ten street entrance, so it's quite a bit of a larger project. Um, along with that, there is grant administration um, meetings and paperwork that needs to be submitted with the state and make sure we have all our um, Ts crossed and Is dotted for that. And uh, lastly, along with that, is traffic study will be required um, regarding uh, safety of pedestrians along um, North Seventy-One there and crossing North Seventy-One, which I know is a high priority for a lot of us. The reason that this was be, or that this is being proposed as an amendment to the twenty-two is, is since project work started in twenty-two, instead of having part of the project in the twenty-two and part in the twenty-five, we wanted to keep one project in one contract. So that's why um, I'm asking for an amendment to the twenty twenty-two contract, but the work would happen in twenty twenty-five. And with that, I would stand for any questions you may have.
Questions? Bill, Audrey?
Um, thank you, Mary. Um, the traffic study would incorporate then any concerns or updates to um, safety issues into this design um, um, for that to take place when we do this, is that correct?
Jared, could you speak to that, please?
Evening, Mayor Council. Um, as it relates to the um, amendment that's being discussed tonight, yes, the intersection would be evaluated as part of that design process. And then we would identify what improvements that might consist of, um, because that had come up at a previous meeting uh, to review that. And then, once the design piece is done, then the cost estimates we provide, and we'll go through the similar process where plans are presented to you uh, with an estimated cost and decisions regarding what improvements are made, can be made at that time. But they'll be evaluated as part of the design, yes.
Okay, so, but the funding that we're getting requires this, right? To have that traffic study and, and, and safety improvements into the grant money that we're receiving?
The grant that was received for the local road improvement program um, includes a pavement. When that was presented, there was a question that was brought up by council regarding investigating the safety of the crossing as a, as a result of inquiries from businesses and residents in that area. So that's been added to the proposal uh, to be evaluated as part of that.
Okay, my concern is that we've talked about those things, and I've heard um, that there were suggestions made before to make that safer and we never did them. And so I just was concerned if we do the study and that we would make improvements or update it without improving safety.
Any other questions? Others, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving amendment number three to the two thousand twenty-two engineering services contract with Bolton and Mink in the amount of three hundred and five thousand dollars.
Second, we got a motion and a second discussion. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what were they paid originally for the twenty twenty-two?
The. Three hundred ninety-one thousand seven hundred forty-eight.
So this, three hundred and five is additional.
An additional, yes. There, I, correct. There, I, correct, yep. There was also other, they, it was also, the original amount also included the projects that were done in twenty-two, such as Sixth Street and Industrial Drive and Litchfield Avenue.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Baggarly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Need another motion to adopt the resolution approving project twenty-five oh three D preliminary budget of two million nine hundred two thousand seven hundred dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Baggarly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Council.
Next, we call on Kyle Box, our Operations Director, to go over the CIP American Rescue Plan Act.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, as was previously stated at the beginning of the meeting, this agenda item was prepared as an action item and has been changed to an information only item for tonight's discussion. However, I would still like to go through and walk through this agenda item with the council for future consideration. Two two areas that still would need to be addressed here, ideally before the end of the year or into early twenty twenty-five, and I will explain. So first, we'll start with the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. By twenty twenty-two, the city had received a little over two point one million dollars in funds. And over the last two years, the City Council has approved approximately one point nine million of those funds to be spent through a variety of projects and programs consisting of mental health assessments, technology updates and upgrades, which include software, doors, cameras. The council approved a childcare grant, turnout gear for the fire department, waste, excuse me, water infrastructure, updates at the airport, an air exchanger at Public Works Facility, park improvements, including playground equipment, court resurfacing, and a bike and trail master planning. According to the federal government, for these ARPA funds requirements, for the requirements for the for the ARPA funds, approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars remains to be allocated and obligated with an agreement, contract, or purchase order by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. If the city does not act on allocating or obligating to spend those funds under a purchase order or contract by the end of the year, those funds will need to be returned to the federal government. So as we look through some of the projects that previous council had, or council has previously discussed, along with some staff in inputs of previously approved or identified projects throughout ARPA funds, the city, so just I want to highlight some eligible expenses that could be considered. And I, again, this is not a recommendation for tonight's council, this is for information only, and I would love to appreciate to have this conversation at a future meeting. But since administratively, since funds would need to be obligated to allocate for the end of the year, the city does have currently currently has a five-year contract with Tyler Technology, that is our software provider for various software tools and those annual costs. For that total package, costs the city approximately a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a year, plus implementation costs are to be expected throughout twenty twenty-five as we continue to build and phase that project in. Also identified from previous city council meetings is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds to be used for housing specifically for a, to be transferred to the HRA. The City of Wilmer Parks and Rec Department has a remaining balance of eighty-seven thousand, approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars for playground equipment in twenty twenty-five. And out of these identified projects, there's projects, there's a little over a hundred, three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in requests or that are identified in this memo. And again, just to reiterate, the council must identify a project or projects to to obligate the ARPA funds before the end of the year. Any questions on ARPA?
Justin?
The Tyler Technology, a hundred and fifty-six K a year. We wouldn't spend ARPA funds on that, what's the plan for for paying for that? Yeah, it would come from general, the general fund. So that's been budgeted, the mayor's budget that's been proposed, that's included in there. Correct, okay. There's a, yes, we would be able to move funds to pay for that expense. And so if we, in theory, if we were spending ARPA funds for that, we'd reduce the budget by a hundred and fifty-six thousand. Potentially, but as the city council is aware, there are other projects that the city could fund in place of that. This is just an example of a allowed use of funds that could come out of ARPA. However, there are still needs in other projects, programming, other expenses that we wouldn't necessarily be recommending to reduce the budget if we're using ARPA funds to pay for this example for software. Okay, thank you.
Audrey?
What have we already used of ARPA funds for Tyler Technology? Because we, that's what we used to buy the software. And I thought we had already put funds in there for maintenance or for the thing. So what is this figure that isn't already in the, hadn't already been accounted for? Because I thought we had a whole chunk that we did for them to be able to do that.
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't have an exact number for you, but I would be happy to provide that to you and the council on what we have spent with ARPA funds on Tyler Technology. Round numbers for twenty twenty-four, and this includes all technology updates. So anything that has to do with software, cameras, doors, the whole gamut there, right around three hundred and thirty thousand. And that also included, including in that is implementation costs with Tyler as well. So in addition to the hundred and fifty-six annually, so, but I will provide that breakout to the council on what has specifically gotten to Tyler Tech.
Okay. And I need to speak to the housing. One, our previous mayor made a verbal commitment of putting that hundred and fifty thousand into that HRA setting up a housing, now I can't say the right word.
Trust fund or?
Trust fund, yes, which would allow us to apply for grants and other things, which there is something that will be coming up this next year. And the county made a commitment to do the same thing. And that trust fund has been set up and the county has made their contribution. And in my mind, we made a verbal commitment to do this, to get that fund started, to work on housing and for us to be able to apply for grants, state grants, et cetera, we had to have that trust fund set up. That is done, I have asked for HRA to come before if we need to to explain how that would work and what, how it would be used in Wilmer. And so I'm still fully on board that we made a commitment to do a hundred and fifty thousand of the ARPA funds for that. And we have not talked about the other funds that we've gotten from the state for housing, which I think the council needs to be involved in that conversation also. That would help to understand with some of that. And so that's a request that I have, that we have a better understanding of that and that we honor that verbal commitment that we made.
Okay. Any other questions for Kyle?
Otherwise, we'll move on to the CIP, CIP portion of the of the memo here. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, identified into the twenty twenty-five operating budget is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be transferred to the Capital Improvement Fund, which is Fund Four Fifty. Previously, previously identified projects that have been brought before the council totaled approximately right around two point one million dollars. And acknowledging the gap in funds, we did lay out some potential recommendations or staff recommendations for the council to consider. Now, I will address the previous work sessions and meetings with city council members that there, we staff have have stated that as long as the funds council is comfortable with making that transfer or approving the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general fund to be transferred to the Community Capital Improvement Program, the conversation on CIP approved projects could happen at a later date. So this isn't a, this is just, like I mentioned, an information only, this is an idea of staff recommended projects that have to do mainly with building equipment, building maintenance, equipment maintenance, grant matches at the airport, and then keeping up as up to date as we can on rotating vehicles with the police department. Again, this is just a, for information for the council tonight. I will offer to the council, you are so inclined, we have reserved space at the municipal utilities next Monday, next Monday and Tuesday, if the council would so desire to have a work session to discuss the budget as a whole or ARPA or and or the CIP. So I just wanted to share that with the council and whatever you would wish to do. Otherwise, if we, if if that meeting does not occur, we do need to make sure, identify those projects either on dice for ARPA only, either December second or December sixteenth. Would be the next two great last meetings for the year.
Who else? Thank you, thank you, Mayor. We call on our interim police chief, Mike Holm, in regards to Criminal Prosecution Services.
I didn't get any paperwork with it, but it's, didn't allow it to come through. It's the bid proposal for the prosecution contract, which we which is a three-year deal that just ended. And they're looking to put it out for bids again. Be for next year.
Yes. This was, the past was a three-year contract. I would say that request for proposals will also be a three-year contract. The reason for this is the the RFP request is we have had local law firms asking about if we were going to be putting this out for proposals. So that's why we're doing this.
So is this, the the end of the three years is the end of the year?
Correct.
To December thirty-first, okay. So the proposals, request for proposal will go out shortly.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the release of the RFP for the Criminal Prosecution Services.
We got a motion and a second discussion, questions? Seeing or hearing them, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Baggarly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you, Mike. All right, community pride. Audrey?
I'm just curious if we are going to set a time for a meeting next week or when staff, when the council wants to talk about the rest of the budget and the so it's not, it's not community pride, but it's a question before we adjourn.
Yeah, I agree. What was it, it was community, it was the budget and?
Mr. Mayor, yes, the work session could consist of a general budget update, identify ARPA funds and and the CIP discussion as well. Much as I don't want another meeting, I think we do need to be.
Yeah, I think we do too.
I'm available on Tuesday, but not on Monday.
I can do Tuesday.
Tuesday's time for me.
Works for me. Works for me.
I think, calendar, but I think so.
Six thirty?
Six thirty, Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
Tuesday.
At Public Utilities?
Will be checking with the utilities, I don't think we got, oh, did it work?
Yeah.
Okay, Public Utilities it is.
All right, Tuesday, six thirty, MUC Auditorium. Anything else? Thank you, Audrey. Move to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.